Let me need order. Do you all please rise? He asked to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, please take your role.
Alderman Bassel. Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kramarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney are all present.
All right, no special presentations tonight, if I'm aware. Okay. Under the consent calendar, we've got the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting from July 7th, 2020, along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending July 17th, 2020. If motion to approve that.
Go move.
Move by Alderman Kramarski, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Here. I'm sorry, yes.
Alderman Bassel, you with us yet? Okay. Motion carries.
All right, no sealed bids tonight. Under my report, I've got a couple of things which I'd like to update everyone. As far as the census, as of the middle of July.
Hello?
Yes, you're on, you're on here, Bob. Gotcha, Bob. Under the, as of the middle of July, we have a participation rate of 82.4%, which is fantastic compared to the state average of 66.8%. So again, I thank you, all the residents who have taken part in the census and it helps us dramatically going forward as far as the funding we get from the state, since it's all based on a per capita income. The program we had for the vehicle stickers and spending in Palis Heights, just like to give you an idea that the, we had participation of 1,690 people participated in that program with a value of $79,715, of which $11,800 were given out in vouchers, another $637.50 in tokens, and $67,277 were given out in vehicle stickers, which may seem like a lot, and in actuality it is, but even going head and hand with the fact that aside from the 67,000, over 67,000 we got in the program, which was done to inspire people to spend money in Palis Heights, we also collected about $84,000, almost $85,000 in vehicle stickers on a cash basis. So, with the combination of those two, which is over 150,000, we were able to fund the road program this year. The combination of that and the MFT funds without actually having to go into our budget and number for the roads, which is a, which is a great thing. So I want to thank everyone who participated and I hope the merchants who, people who spent money at the merchants, I think are happy and, from what I've heard, and it seemed like it worked out real well for us. So a little bit of a cost to us as a city. Just giving you a little update here, we currently are in phase four of the Restore Illinois Plan. It's allowed us to kind of move forward, kind of back to normality, if there is such a word in this environment. And just like to say that, you know, all our decisions we made during this whole program were based on facts supplied to us by the various agencies. You know, we've always acted with the intention of protecting the best interest of the city's people, the Palis Heights, and we weren't out there to make decisions based on embarrassing people at a state level or federal level. It was done just to protect the people in Palis Heights. And in many cases, there was some, you know, should we say inconvenience, and I apologize for that, but again, it was done to protect the people in the town. And we've made accommodations and changes accordingly, you know, as the program has changed. And just for example, the pool is open. As of July 13th, the pool opened up and we are getting some activity there, you know, all throughout the day. We were hosting some concerts back with the city, just to give you an example. We've got two concerts that are scheduled for August 1st. We have one and then August, the first one, I'm sorry, is on August 6th, and the second one is on August 20th. It'll be in the parks. So that's, again, getting back to some normality. And we have two movies that are planned. One on the 30th of July will be in the rec center and the memorial park. We will have one on August 13th. So again, those movies will be available. All that information is on the website at the rec center. So if you, the rec department, if you have any information or any idea what you want to do, please, you know, check with the rec center as far as the information, and it'll be there as far as specifics, as far as time and registration for the usage of the pool. Just to answer a couple of questions, you know, do we require masks, you know, in the, in businesses? And the servers in the businesses are required to wear masks. And we encourage people who are going, you know, to social distance and going into the restaurants to wear masks if they can. They're not necessary, but please, you know, keep in mind, you know, it's a safety factor and we want to end this thing as quickly as we can, and it seems like masks and social distancing is one or two of the easiest ways to do so. So go forward. We hopefully will get back to, again, to some normality if there is such a thing. So that being said, City Clerk?
No report.
City Treasurer, what do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the treasurer's report for the period ending June 30th. General funds started the month with $4,307,605, revenues of $508,154, expenses of $804,906, other source use, other source use $12,216, giving ending cash in the general fund of $4,023,070. Total of all funds started June with $19,418,787, revenues of $1,182,901, expenses of $1,319,781, other source use $105,949, giving an ending cash balance in all funds of $19,387,856. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
I entertain the motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Go move.
Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Kramarski. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
Communications, anyone here this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have two, and some of the other, we may have seen it. One's from a resident that lives on the, like, northwest corner of Harlem in 131st. They express some displeasure at the way that the, outside their fence. This would be the first house that's inside the corner when you make the right at 131st to go west. It would be on Yute Lane at, like, 7200. Ischnell. Ischnell. It's basically the first house on the, on the furthest edge of Ischnell down at the corner. And I guess the weeds and other things are getting out of hand and, and the, either the city or the county or whoever runs the roads, and they were wondering, since it is like a gateway to our city, that could they, somebody take care of those weeds. They're taking care of the other side. And they were wondering, could somebody from the city, state, county, I know I'm not going to do it, but somebody else can.
County.
Right. So it's just, that's one communication. Maybe we could have somebody look into that. The second communication we had came from another resident. And, Bob, it came from another resident.
Hello?
Hello?
You're on, Bob. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Hello? Yes, this is Bob.
All right, you're in. Okay, you're in.
This is all good.
Okay. Another, just another resident.
Are we connected now?
Yes, you are.
I've got to quit drinking early. Anyhow.
Hello?
Bob, you're here, okay?
All right. You know what? This other communication is not worth talking about because I think we've heard enough about Alderman Bassel. I was just going to say that another came in from a resident.
Is that thing on mute?
No.
I don't hear anybody.
I think it's a tape. It just keeps replaying. But anyhow, they were just concerned about the, what's going to happen on 119th and Harlem.
I don't hear anybody.
I have some correspondence, pluses and minuses. Some people are in favor, some people do not think we need another gas station. They can get their gas elsewhere. So anyhow, that's all I have.
All right. I don't know how to follow this, but citizens wishing to address the council, I know.
I've got two submissions. One's a letter dated June 22nd, 2020 to Alderman McGovern. Please know that I have concerns regarding public safety or the lack thereof related to the demonstration slash protest conducted at Community Park and Pavilion on June 12th, 2020, and all future marches and demonstrations targeted for the city of Palis Heights. Please confirm that the elected and appointed officials representing the city of Palis Heights completed their due diligence prior to issuing permits related to the use of public facilities under the jurisdiction of the city of Palis Heights, thereby providing public safety. I had the opportunity of observing the marching demonstration activities from the corner of 120th Street and 76th Avenue on Friday, June 12th, 2020, from 12:15 to 14:00 hours. While the Palis Heights Police Department did an admirable job of rerouting the traffic, social distancing or masking was not practiced by all the demonstrating participants, nor to be reasonable to expect the Palis Heights Police Department to enforce social distancing, masking for a crowd of this size. One, was the protest march exempted from the stringent requirements placed by Illinois Governor Pritzker or the farmer's market, and COVID-19 update posting for Lake Catherine is found on the city of Palis Heights website? If there were exemptions granted, please provide the rationale for these exemptions. Per the city of Palis Heights website, permitting applications and bond assurances are requirements for the city of Palis Heights public facilities under their jurisdiction for group usage. Please provide applicant's names and submission dates for the required permits related to city of Palis Heights Community Park and Pavilion for Friday, June 12th, 2020. Black Millennium Resistance set up tables, chairs, and numerous placards in the community park for the purpose of solicitation of funds, propaganda distribution, membership enrollment, and voting enrollment. The regional news reports BMR is being associated with Trinity Christian College located in Palis Heights. Yet an in-depth search of trinity.edu student life, student organizations shows no reference or association with the college. Prior to the arrival of the marchers at Community Park, I took the opportunity to speak with onsite personnel regarding BMR. I was informed that BMR was a newly formed, quote, "offshoot of the Black Lives Mass Matter International Organization" and also associated with the Black Student Union at Trinity Christian College. The person providing this information identified herself as Annie, the person in charge. Number two, what vetting of this and similar organizations will be conducted by the city of Palis Heights prior to granting permits related to public land and facility usage? Three, what additional costs were incurred by the city of Palis Heights to provide necessary and required public safety as related to the two marches and demonstrations held on Thursday, June 11th, 2020, and Friday, June 12th, 2020? My expectation is that your response will assure me that all protocols and ordinances relating to marches and demonstrations are followed, ensuring neighborhood public safety. I am looking forward to your response. Respectfully, Clyde Barons, 11933, Harold Avenue. Harold Avenue. My second submission from this evening is from Bob Grossart. I want, I want to express my opposition to the development of the gas station convenience store, which will be voted on Tuesday, 7/21/20 at the city council. Please include in the public records for the following. The following is the basis for my objection to the development. Support for the project at the ZBA on 6/29/20, zero in favor, five opposed. Planning and zoning commission of 6/29/20, zero in favor, six opposed. Business and economic advisory committee, zero in favor, ten opposed. Thirty-five residents attended the meeting to voice their opposition. Due to virus restrictions, additional residents were not allowed to attend the meeting. Should also be mentioned that many residents assume the elected officials will conduct business in the best, in their best interest, as it would not be practical for all residents to be present to discuss these issues. There was total opposition by business and economic advisory committee members who have a vested interest in Palis Heights. Attached a letter of January 27th, 2020, to the planning and zoning committee from the business and economic advisory committee regarding the 2019 comprehensive plan update and implementation of the gateway property located at the northeast corner of Route 83 in Harlem. The result from the meeting on July 15th of 2020, the Palis zoning commission, two in favor, two opposed. The following issues were raised at the meeting on 7/15/20. Property's been vacant for 20 years. The total development acreage is approximately eight acres. Seventy-five percent of the property is now developed and bringing revenue to Palis Heights. The proposed gas station and convenience store will take approximately 50% of the remaining open property, and the remaining 50% will remain undeveloped. Since the 7-Eleven will close its existing store and the new location will be larger, it is estimated that the incremental gain in revenue to Palis Heights will approximate $50,000 per year. It is estimated that the gas station could provide an incremental income to Palis Heights of approximately $45,000, which could be reduced with the development of electrical vehicles. Should be noted that only 12% of the property is being proposed for development. Pursuit to the comprehensive plan, unanimous approval by the city council on 9/9/19. Why have this plan if it's not going to be followed? The cost to the city was $40,000. Many public hearings were conducted together, input and views regarding the importance of the gateway is included on pages eight, 19, 29, 58, and 60. Purpose of the plan is to provide vision for the future for decision makers, and there's a link to the plan. Concerns with the proposed development include it's not a good use of gateway property, traffic going through the senior living property, the 7-Eleven location at 135th and Ridgeland does not present a good image, and it's the same company. Currently have numerous gas stations at the major entry points to Palis Heights. Most were developed before the first comprehensive plan. The incremental gains will be offset by price shopping for prices in Palis Heights. Second, the remaining lots will be hard to develop behind the proposed 7-Eleven. Third, there'll be a switch to electric cars, and there's an article relating to the movement for electric cars attached as well. And there's a link to that article as well. So I will include both of these submissions for the record.
Okay.
Those are all the submissions I had as of 7 o'clock this evening.
Any other citizens wishing to address the council? Not standing committees, finance, Alderman McGrogan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that we want to report on is two matters that we discussed, well, several matters we discussed, but the most important one is there won't be a need for an executive session later this evening. We had a personnel matter that we decided to defer to for a later date, and we'll get back to the city on that. So, like, item number 18 or 17, we don't really need to have an executive session. And also too, and I plan on talking about this each month, and maybe each meeting, we did discuss the proposed referendum that the state of Illinois, especially Governor Pritzker, is recommending approval on. We identified some impacts that would have to the city if it's favorably approved by the residents of Illinois. Most importantly, taking money from a lot of people's disposable income, which could greatly affect our retail establishments across the board, from food, restaurants, car repairs, you name it, right down the line. And so we're going to work with the city attorney to see what type of recommendations we can make, either pro, con, or just neutral, but just to make sure the residents know what the impact might be. So I plan on talking about it because it's a very important matter. Just think of if you doubled your state income tax, if you just did your tax returns, that might be money that you could buy a couple of pizzas with. So that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Public safety, Alderman McGovern's not here. Anybody have a report for him? No? Okay. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Bassel? Anything?
I can't hear that. Hello?
I've heard him.
I would like to, I would like to say that at our last.
I don't know.
I may be on, but I can't hear a thing that's going there.
Oh, keep going.
This is my committee report. Mayor, I have no report. I'll finish my sentence.
Please do.
At our last building and grounds meeting, we discussed street signs. This meeting took place, I believe, maybe in January. It's been a while since this committee has actually met. But we did discuss street signs because most of our interior street signs are kind of the generic green signs, and we have the nicer signs with the city emblem on it on 127th and Ridgeland and Harlem. And we discussed the possibility of putting those into our interior streets as well. And I've noticed, because Oak Park is one of the streets that, that's being affected, that that work is happening now. And the signs look very nice. The poles look very nice. And, you know, the plan is that over time, the entire city will have these, these very nice, the same kind of signs that we see on 127th and Harlem. Right now, the public works guys are putting them in. So, you know, we run around and see them. I think it's, it's good for the residents to know that this is happening.
Okay.
And it's coming out of this committee.
Right. Good. I think we've replaced some, like, on 76th Avenue, some of the larger, faster paced, but you're right. It's a good point.
Yeah, it's coming along.
I think it all along knows the case. Good, very good. Okay, planning and zoning, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. DACA 2020-06, petition filed by David Court, right, motion to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance to allow the zoning change from R1 residential to B1, restricted business for the purpose of a law office to operate at 12624 South Ridge and subject to the property reverting back to R1 upon property transfer to the entity not associated with the law office and to certify a copy of the ordinance filed with the court counter recorder D's and no expansion of parking lots or driveways without further permission or hearing by the city of Palis Heights.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion?
Yeah, I passed by the property and I, after looking at the diagrams that were provided in our packet. And the only comment that I would have is that, is that I think that the parking lot on the, on the south, south of the house, the park, I think it needs to be developed as a parking lot because it's a house and there is a driveway that the, the business can use. But otherwise, you'll have parking in the parking lot of the bank. You've got the TGI at Bank.
He didn't request it yet.
Okay.
It's only, it's only a future, and we already discussed possibilities. But you'll have to have another hearing on that because it's still a parking lot and falls under parking lots that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods as far as criteria.
Well, we were given a couple of designs in our packet. And so when I went to look at it, I was thinking about which design, if we, if we approve it, which design I would prefer.
That wasn't in there. I talked to Ken Bussey today and he asked, because I got the thing here in front of me. I asked him about the red highlighting with parking and the curb cut. He said, no, that won't happen. Curb cut off Ridgeland, and the parking lot's a future, and they'll have to come in at a later date. So it just reads the motion that I just read as the one that came in.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
He said aye.
Yes, I heard him. I heard him here too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is DACA 2020-07, petition filed by Kevin Hauser. Motion to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance to allow for chiropractor medical clinic to operate as special use in the B district at 7230 West 127, contingent upon issuance of an occupancy permit by the building department.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is her second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. This is the building that we had an issue with before?
Yes.
Okay, is Kevin Hauser, is he a MD? Is he a chiropr-
He's a chiropractor. He used to have a business in town right by American Bagel at one time, and he had left. He just moved back into town to re, and once reopened his business back in town, relocated here rather than somewhere else. And that building became available. And the reason it's contingent on the occupancy permit is there's a few code infractions on the existing owner of the property. They have to be cleaned up for an occupancy permit. Well, parking lot issues drained, and they're all being addressed.
And I mean, this gentleman is licensed, is?
He's all licensed, State of Illinois, very rugged.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's the end of my report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And another two were, Mr. Gonzalez.
You got to waive the rules on that.
Oh, excuse me. There was a motion, a request to waive the rules for Mr. Hauser in the event of the occupancy permit.
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Kramarski. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman, Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
There you go. Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And two other issues were removed to the August 4th meeting, was the Gonzalez pool and the August 5th at a gateway proposal, a 7-Eleven store in Route 83 in Harlem.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hang it, hang it.
Excuse.
To remove for the DACA.
When did they get, when did it get removed? I'm not talking about 7-Eleven. I'm talking about the Gonzalez thing is in our packet.
We called Ken Bussey. He totally wanted to refer it to me, so I said.
Oh, really?
That's the call I got.
What's that?
I have him on the go-to meeting.
Are they there?
They were. I don't see the picture now, but they were there. I muted them. I have two other people that.
Why would they be on there? I don't think they.
Well, Bussey, there's this guy told me, he said they were removed.
Why would they be on there if they, if they're not adding the agenda?
They're on there because it came out of committee on last Tuesday.
Well, ask him, ask him, did they make a request to be on the next DACA?
Yeah, they must have. I wonder if they, ask him if Mr. Gonzalez is on there? Is he, just ask if Mr. Gonzalez.
Is Mr. Gonzalez on the call here?
They don't have him now. I had his picture and his.
Is Mr. Gonzalez on the call?
He must have just, after he started, he must have disconnected.
You know, Mr. Mayor, this thing has been lingering around for months. I mean, since it's on the DACA, and I don't think the plan's going to change. We could just vote on it, and if it does change, they can come back with their changes, and we can look at it again. I mean, that's, that would be my recommendation.
Alderman Key. I wanted to address this issue before we voted. I mean, can we, is there some way calling?
Did they come back on? I heard some.
There's somebody came back on, but all I get is caller six.
I don't know. According to Bussey, they had some new things that were going to do. I guess it was landscape, they refunded a fence and some other things. And I asked him if he was sure of this, and he said, yeah.
Just call the Gonzalez.
Let's, let's keep going, and we'll get back to it.
Then we can come back.
Come back to it. Okay.
For this, later in the meeting.
Refer it to the end.
We'll come back later.
Back it to the end of the meeting.
Right, that's fine. Okay, we'll come back to your committee.
That's the end of my report.
Okay. Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, the mayor mentioned that we have some movies in the park and concerts slated for, in the ensuing weeks, but I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, this first movie in the park, which is on July 30th, it's by registration only because we're, they're really bending over backwards to make sure that there's social distancing, and we need to control how many people can be in a certain area. And so I think it's going to be cordoned off, and you have to have a, you have to make a reservation for your family to come and enjoy the movie.
Okay.
And that's going to be at Myers Park, right behind the rec center. And that really concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Roads to construction, Alderman Kramarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to pass a resolution establishing prevailing wages on public works contracts.
Second.
Move by Alderman Kramarski, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kramarski.
Yes. And I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for the great job they did with the cleanup after that windstorm we had the other day. So they did a fantastic job, and they got everything cleaned up. Great job, guys.
Great.
See you at my report.
Thank you. Okay. Licensed permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the release of the Park Villa Nursing Homes maintenance bond.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski. Move by Alderman Lewandowski, second by Alderman Kromarski. Discussion?
The city council meeting.
Rule call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Can I get a hold of you two?
Yes.
I got you. Alderman Bassow.
Drive what?
No.
No.
Got it. Thank you.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on the Park Villa thing, Alderman Bassow said yes.
Yes, I got that. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on my report this evening is the matter of the driveway request at 12859 Shoshone Road. As the city council's aware, this particular item resulted in a 2-2 vote in committee in pursuant to the ordinance adopted by this city council at the 1st July city council meeting. It is being brought before the full city council with a no recommendation this evening.
Okay. So, it's move by Alderman Lewandowski, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have concerns. They are extremely over the coverage for the front yard. And it's also a driveway that really goes nowhere. It's just a cir, half circle in the front yard. It does not go to the garage. And my understanding is it's just a playground for the children. So, I'm opposed to it. That would be three curb cuts for that one house, so.
Yeah, I drove by, I thought it was, it worked, fit, to me, it fit right fine with the rest of the neighborhood as far as the circle drives, and it doesn't go to the front door, the way I look at it, but.
I went, I went there as well, and, and I found two houses within one block with the same setup. 12920 Chactaw and 7429 Ishnala had, had the same type of setup. And interestingly, it looked like it was done a long time ago, like these were original construction driveways. I also noted, I would also note that my next-door neighbor has, in Navajo, has the same setup, a driveway to the garage and a circular driveway that serves the front door.
Right.
Navajo and Ishnala were developed around the same time. I suspect that there are, that there are homes in both developments that are set up that way. So, it would seem to me that what they're asking for is not unusual to the Ishnala subdivision.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, too. Very familiar, of course, that's in the 4th Ward, which on the Alderman, I actually lived on the corner of Uton, Winnebago, had the same kind of setup with a circle drive and also other residents right in that general area. In addition, my current residence is not in Ishnala, but Misty Meadows, and on my block, there's multiple circular drives. In discussions with Chris and other people within the city, this actually, like, I think besides the issue of, like, whether or not we vote in favor or against this, we definitely should go back and look and see, why would we not want to have people spend money to improve their homes? I also talked to some real estate agents and said circular drives aesthetically add to the value of homes. This young couple, who I think they're probably in their 30s, maybe, you know, they had some, like, their oldest kid, I think, was 14, and they have some younger ones that are on, like, you know, big wheels and that kind of stuff, that I think that we're trying to attract people like this. The lady, when she came to the committee, made a, kind of a plea saying, you know, we spent, like, and she gave us the dollar amount, it was a lot of money, and she said, and we've spent considerable amount of money fixing the house up, and we're, and we're still, like, ready to go and spend more money for the driveway because it's a safety issue as far as they're concerned. Because they said the steepness of the side drive that goes to the garage, with, you know, it's like a little bit of a, like a toboggan slide, let's say, not, probably not like the one over on Payless Park, but you know what I mean? And so, to me, I think, why would we try to inhibit someone from improving their property? And as Alderman Kromarski pointed out, this one does have, like, a variance on the, on the ratio for landscaping, green, greenery. But on the other hand, it is kind of like, as she pointed out, actually even in her remarks, an area that the kids could play on, as well as the people can park their cars. So, I think it really serves two purposes. One, giving the people the benefit of having, you know, safety, and two, like a park, and three, maybe for the cars. And maybe not in that direct order, but for me, and having lived in Ishnala, there's a circle of driveways all over the place. And, and, you know, maybe if we go back and we look at that ordinance, maybe there are certain areas of the city that it wouldn't apply, and we should maybe look at it on a case-by-case basis, which we're doing.
Especially areas that have actually sewer, sewers in the streets, as opposed to surface water drainage would be more-
Right.
-applicable to it.
The big objection in here is basically, yeah, there are some others that have, like the driveways, as far as, when they were done, they were done, some of those previous ones were done and allowed way back when, when they first built that, before the land use or coverage ordinances were updated for runoff and drainage. And this one here particularly isn't just a drive, but it's exceeding 550 square feet beyond allowable minimum on land, on lot coverage. So, that's the big objection I have on that, so.
Any other questions? Other people on the, are they?
They're not muted, so somebody should answer.
Any questions, anyone have of the petitioners that are here?
Alderman Bassow.
Yeah.
Alderman Bassow.
Okay, rule call?
Alderman Bassow.
No.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
No.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
No.
Motion carries.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
No report today, Mr. Mayor.
Business and economic development, Alderman Key?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, question back in the last question. Was that a motion to adopt?
To approve it, to approve the driveway request, yes.
But it is, adopt, approved, they went to that with the pool for the former.
Right, right.
So, it's adopt.
Adopt, right. Okay. Alderman, you're done, Alderman Key? I'm sorry.
Yes, no report, sir.
Let's just throw this in. Cable TV, Alderman, government's not here tonight, I assume there's no report. Any old business? Any new business?
Mr. Mayor?
Were, were we able to confirm or?
I'm sorry.
I tried to call and inform twice and that's the message.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
You know what, I'd like to just, so, we're not going to vote on it tonight?
Apparently not, if they've asked for it to be deferred.
Okay, so, but I'd still like to address it just with some comments because I'd like everyone to consider my comments in the next two weeks before we meet again.
Sure.
But I've visited this, this site in more, you know, three or four times now. And I'm in my 10th year as an Alderman here, and this is the most unconventional site of anything that's ever come before the zoning committee that I sit on. And, you know, the, the address is actually where their garage is and not where their front door is, even though it's in the exact same location as the one in a couple blocks away that we just voted on, where the address is on Shoshone. And, you know, why is it on Shoshone in that location, but it's on Kiowa over here? And then, secondly, the house, there's only, there's two houses on the block, the petitioner's house and then one to the north. The home to the north is set so far towards the curb, almost the depth of a two-car garage, farther to the street than the petitioner's house. I don't know how that ever got built that way. And I, I don't know anywhere else in the city where the, where the houses are kind of lined up, you know, let's say 50 feet off the curb or something like this. This is the only block, very unconventional, that the petitioner's house is here, if this is the street, and then way closer to the curb is the neighbor's house. So, if you were standing on the front porch of the petitioner's house, you would actually be looking in the side yard fence of that yard, and then over the fence, you could see the top of the garage and the roof line. You're not, you're not looking down the block. And so, there's fence already there. And so, the fence at the neighbor's house is already extended, you know, 20 feet to where the, you know, petitioner's house is. And then, the other thing is that we have this situation where in the easement between the two homes is this water main or drainage drain or whatever this big pipe is coming under there. So, it's very unconventional lot. And then, the whole procedure that this petitioner has gone through has been equally as unconditional. Because it went through the ZBA, they got approved, it went to zoning, and before it came here to council, and in that ensuing time, we discovered that there's, the Public Works Director discovered, you know, there is this underground pipe. And so, we need to take that in consideration. So, now that it's gone through the ZBA once and the zoning, it came to council, we sent it back to ZBA with the caveat that they now take a look at that underground pipe and see how that would impact this, this proposal of putting a pool there in the backyard. Now, because the idea was, we didn't, they didn't want to have any construction over that pipe, the petitioner then changed some things. And it went through the ZBA again, which it got approved. And then, it went through zoning and it came back to council, and the council sent it back to the committee again, which we discussed last week, and now it's here again. And so, it's, it's so unconventional that this is bounced back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And what I find unconventional as well is our response to this, because I, I just, I cannot wrap my brain around why, if you consider the, the lot, how different it is, and this neighbor's house location, everything we've asked of this petitioner, they've done. They've gone through this whole procedure, bouncing back and forth. They redesigned the pool, the shape, the size of it. They redesigned where the pool was going to be located so that there's not going to be any construction over this pipe. We had no negative feedback then in regard from Public Works. And yet, we're still voting no. And so, this is, this is what I really don't understand. Why would we send it back to ZBA to be, if we had no intention, no matter what they said, what new information was going to come out, if we're still going to just vote no? Why would we put the residents through this? So, you know, we're concerned about the pipe, that's the main issue here. So, let's send it back to ZBA. Everything gets changed. The pool is no longer over the pipe. The engineers are going to take a look at it. In fact, if you look at this, what's on the DACA tonight, the last phrase in this is "all subject to review by the city engineer." So, with that caveat thrown in there, we don't have to worry about something disrupting that pipe or causing damage to the pipe or causing us to not be able to work on that pipe. So, we send it back to the ZBA, they looked at it again, it comes back to us, and we're still getting all these no votes. And then, it gets sent back to committee again, still the same no votes, which I don't understand because we keep, they keep on doing what we asked them. We don't want the pool there, so they move it. It can't be round. Okay, it's now rectangular. All they're doing is asking to move their fence to where the neighbor's fence is, connect up to the same thing. Why would we allow the neighbor's fence to come out that far beyond when the house is built in a different location? Why would we allow them to have a fence that far beyond the, the next-door neighbors?
They did it to code.
It might be to code, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, the sense of-
I know, but I'm, I'm talking, Jack.
Yeah, I know.
Wait, I'm not done.
Wait a minute.
You can make your comments, I'm not done. I'm not done.
Hold on. It's me and my zoning meeting at 711.
I'm not done.
Jaclyn, I'm finished.
All right, Kedler, go ahead.
We, we vote for other variations all the time, whether it's a fence or the pool, other stuff like this, all the time. And usually, the, the negative part is to say that there has to be a hardship involved. So, what, what I'm saying is that if there's a reason for a hardship, it's in this location. If, if you go there and take a look, what's considered their backyard, they have no backyard. What is, what is considered their backyard, so the, the front yard's on Comanche, but if you, if you look at their back, there's a little sidewalk, and then another, maybe the width of this table where there's a landscape, and then there's a fence, there's no backyard. There's hardly, there, there's a driveway to the south. There's this pipe to the north. This is a hardship case. It's, I don't know anyone in the world that has ever said, when they bought a house, I wonder if there's a pipe in the backyard. So, I know we're not going to vote on this tonight. All I'm appealing is that all of us who have a vote, consider the things I just said. I, I'm, if, I don't care, if someone votes no, I'm not going to be mad at those people, I'm just, I'm asking you to consider what I'm saying tonight, that's all. I know we're not voting on it until next time.
Good.
First of all, Ken Bussey told me that's why it's off the DACA. He's the zone, he handles all the stuff and put it. First time I went back was that because they didn't know when they voted that it was over a main drainage pipe, they found subdivision, so they recommended to go back for review with that information because it could have a big bearing on everything. If something happened to that pipe and all those houses over there flood, then it would accrue us because we're going to be on liability if that pipe broke. And that was his big concern. Then, when they wrote the motion that time, I caught it, it said, motion to approve, and we were just drafting it. And when we voted on it, technically it failed, until I caught it and asked the question, move to approve, is this mean we're adopted or no? We're just drafting it. Then, somehow, a discussion ensued, and it ended up back at the ZBA. Technically, at the first time on that vote, it failed. If we were to hold to it, actually didn't. And I caught that, it was a favor to them that we took it back to the, it was being a draft and not a motion to, to approve. As far as the house to the north goes, when that subdivision was built, that house is sited at the exact setback it's supposed to be. Their fence is exactly the code on a corner lot, comes off the rear corner of their home, proceeds to the south, and then goes to the east on their rear lot. That's exactly how the code reads it, that's exactly how all the others do. That's why that fence happened to be out there. The Gonzalez's home was just ill-sited over there, whoever built it, the way they put it there, the address thing I don't know about, there's a lot of those around there, but that was all part of it there. And when you buy a house and there's an easement in there, usually in the deed, it shows you where the easement is, and it would show you what's there. Am I right or wrong? Isn't that noted in the easement?
It would be on the title report.
Yeah, so that would have been in it, they would have had it noted. The other thing is, on a part of the yard they had, they put in a big cement patio with a big metal gazebo, so they took up part of the yard. And that's where all the issues are coming now. Now, they came back and they said, okay, we'll move it here at 7, the pool is only two feet over the building line, and the fence is another 10 feet past that over the building line or the setback line. But now they give a call, called ten, they're going to, you know, landscape, out front, shield, the fence, and all of that. And that's where it's at. So then evidently, they asked, asked Ken to defer it to August 4th. Because Ken called me and said, "The 7-Eleven will be deferred to August 4th, and the pool issue will not be on the docket, just remove and mention deferral to August 4th." And that's what I was told, and that's what I did.
I actually, I like the fact, the fact that it squares off that, by having the fence meet up with the other fence, it kind of squares up that whole intersection.
And Jeff, I don't disagree with anything you just said.
No, it's all right, that's why you can't disagree with it.
What I'm saying is, I'm not accusing the city, or us as a board, of doing something nefarious or something, or do, you know, not doing it the right way. What I'm asking people to consider is that the last time we voted on this, it actually got voted down before it got sent to, back to your committee, which I sit on. What I'm saying is, why would we send it back to committee? And then the petitioner, do what we asked them to, or the engineer, or whoever, whether it's, whether it's Adam at Public Works, or whether it's someone from Morris. If they give the opinion, I think that we should at least consider change, then.
Well, it's coming back as a different project now, since we, since they moved the, the pool is no longer over the pipe, and, you know.
As Paul Harvey says, now for the rest of the story. Artemis, Morris Engineering, made a request that upon contingency, that if it was to pass, that it was not subject to city engineering. The rest of the story is, he did go over there, and he did okay it, with certain caveats, that no spoils be put on the easement, that no fence post be dug into the easement, so they'll have to come up with a way to straddle that easement, so they're not digging down above it. That all liability will be assumed by the homeowner. If the city in the event has to go in there and work on that pipe, and the pool and/or fence or property has to be moved, that it will be on the owner's, it's a whole harmless agreement, basically. Will have to be meant, put in there when the final motion comes out next week. And that's what I was there, and Artemis called me, you know, people called me up and told me, or Ken told me that it was the report he gave back on it. And that's basically, in a nutshell, what he said, that no spoils or fines be thrown, no elevation changes, blah, 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 blah. They'll have to dig in, they'll have to straddle it with something, whatever, on the fence over the pipe, so.
So, I think all the points that, first of all, Dan, I asked Dan, one of the reasons that the petitioner asked to delay the meeting till the 4th is they're hoping that this COVID electronic stuff will be done, they would like to appear before us in person. So they're trying to hold off until they can actually come here and plead their case. Which basically, as Alderman Key so rightly said, is almost like getting to be a trial. And this happens to be in the fourth ward, again, it's in a Schnaller. I lived in a Schnaller. I've been very familiar with this Schnaller. I actually almost bought this house. I actually know it really well. One of the reasons we didn't buy the house is because the side yard, which is on Kiowa, okay, is the side yard to the, to the east of the property. This house has a Kiowa address, so the backyard is actually on, it, it sets next to the people to the north. Okay, so really, this is a backyard thing, not a front yard discussion, which we're spending a lot of time on. And, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we're going to waste another half an hour next week, or two weeks from now, screwing around with this. Because it really, as Alderman Key points out, every single thing that we've asked them, they went back and have done, and actually, they're incurring expenses every single time. These are people, hard-working people, that bought a house in Payless Heights, they have a nice thing. Now they want to improve it, and put a pool in, and by the way, if you haven't gone by it, what they're talking about is putting the exact same kind of fence, not like one that looks like it, but the exact same one. So this fence is white, and it goes right along the side of the house that's to the north. They're going to just continue that straight across. I can't even see why we're wasting time, and if, and if we turn this down, then we have a screwed-up ordinance. I mean, these people.
If I may, and I don't, I'm not interrupting you, Mike.
Okay.
I think that pretty much everybody concurs with Alderman, Mike. I, I've had a conversation with the Public Works Director. He said he will be out there monitoring the construction of the pool. So to eliminate these people having to wait another two weeks, I have no problem voting on this.
I, I'll make a motion that we vote on it.
I'll second that.
Okay, so removing two, what is this, two?
This is 13.
That's the direct we do.
Direct, direct to city attorney.
Prepare the ordinance.
All right, this is, just a direct to city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repose?
No.
Okay, motion carries.
It's over.
Okay, all right. Anything else? New business, old business?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have three items under new business. I agree with Alderman McGrogan on the referendum. I think when people vote, they should vote by being informed. Make sure you get all the information on that referendum, or you could, we could have some real problems here. Second of all, due to the fact that we're having all these variances with driveways, I'm going to ask Alderman Lewandowski to put on his agenda at the next License and Permits meeting, a motion to resend the driveway ordinance. Because every ordinance that comes before us, we almost invariably vote to approve. So we're wasting a lot of time with this, and I would say just resend the driveway ordinance. And thirdly, I think that somehow there has to be some relief for the taxpayers with the children not being in school. We're paying salaries, I understand they're contractual, but there are also expenses that we're paying, and there's nobody occupying these buildings. The buses are sitting idle, and we're, we're not getting any reduction on our tax bill. I think we're really being ripped. So I would like to find out what way we can pursue to get a reduction on this. It's not just one school district, we have several in town. And the biggest offenders are 230 and 118. So I would like to find out how we can apply for a reduction on our tax bill.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I'd like to comment on a couple of points, Alderman Kamarski. I think that rescinding the driveway ordinance is way overdue. I was chairman of that committee for 18, 16 or some years, and, and it was a headache. And invariably, we approved everything. And secondly, if that circle driveway ordinance happens to be in the driveway ordinance, if it's contained within it, I think that should be eliminated. That would just be, I mean, we could vote on it, and people that disagree can say no. But I think we should at least consider it, because, you know, I think any time we have residents that are willing to spend their hard-earned money to improve their homes and improve the values, it's good for not only them, it's good for everybody, including all of the town. Because it increases the value of the properties all across the, the city. And I, some of the things that we try to restrict, not only on the residential side, but even on the commercial side, I think we ought to take a second look, because it's extremely difficult. Like this, you know, I'm not going to get into the gas station, we could talk about that next week. But again, I mean, there's a situation where 20-some years ago, the car dealer went out of business.
25.
25 years ago, and like, we're trying to figure out ways not to, to develop the rest of that corner, which is only a sliver of its left, and I know other people have other opinions, and I respect those opinions. But in, on that point, because we have a couple weeks to think about that, because we would have almost had to talk about it tonight. I'm, you know, I heard about the gateway to the city and everything. Well, one of the things I pointed out the other day, and I think each one of us should take a look and drive around, think about the way you come into Payless Heights. If you come in from the east on Route 83, you have a gas station at 100, at 80, you have not only one gas station, but you have a couple of gas stations and a car wash on 83 and Regent. Let's say you, you don't come into the city that way. You come in on 127th Street, you're going west, and what's the first thing you see? You have the power mart right on the corner. Oh, how about a guy like me that comes up 135th Street? What's the thing I see? I see a 7-Eleven gas station right on the corner. That's like, three in a row, we're batting 300, 1,000% on gateways into the city. Now, what about the people that live in Payless Park? They want to come in and spend some of their hard-earned money? What do they see at the corner of 127th and Harlem? Which is pretty much the beginning of what I consider the core of the city. There's this, an Amoco station, it's been there since I was a little kid, I think, when I came out to go to the plush horse with my parents. So that you've got a gas station over there. So we have, like, at least four, and I, I quit, the rest of the ways, I, I always go those other ways I just talked about. So I don't know what's on the other corners. But those are four corners. And so, to me, to say all of a sudden, we're concerned about, like, over by the river on the north side of town to come in, I, I just think that that's a, and it's one of the main arguments, if not the main argument. I, I just think it's, it's another example of not being, like, cognizant of everything else that we're doing in the town. And, and again, these, these developers are few and far between. They, they pointed out at that meeting, which, and I hope the guys would come next, on the 4th, with statistics, they sent out thousands of pieces of literature on that corner, and no, no takers. Now, as Bob Grossard points out, he's been chairman of that committee for 10 years, you know? Now, to me, in 10 years, if you're the chairman and you think this is a great idea to put something else on that corner, why isn't there something there? You know, are we, I mean, all of us, as I pointed out at the meeting, I would like to see something over there before I'm over at Holy Sepulcher. And that's what, the last thing I'm going to say. I just think we have two weeks to think about it, and we should really, really, like, consider, because it's going to take a lot of votes to, to get that approved. And I, I really do think, and I, I, I mean, it's, it's off the tax rolls. I mean, it's basically not producing hardly any money, and that car wash, I mean, the RZA thing used to be one of our biggest tax providers in the city. And so, with this COVID thing, with businesses dropping, and I'm telling you, if this referendum gets passed, we're going to have a lot of vacancies. And, I mean, there's also a big concern in the retail development industry about that. And I, I just hate to see us turn down a possibility, because, you know, we're getting the reputation around the metropolitan area of nothing can get done at Payless Heights. And I know, because I deal with these fellows all the time, not the particular guys that are doing this gas station, but developers in general, that's my job. And I, I just think we ought to think about it, and Jeff raised a lot of great points as well, about being messy and dirty and stuff over at that 7-Eleven. But as they pointed out, these are different operators, and different people on different stations. And, you know, I, I just think, try to take a look at that real hard before the next two weeks.
Okay, any other?
Just a, in fact, we had a recent hole up, or, one of my neighbors was across about 5:00 in the morning. Probably, they were there waiting for her to come home from, she's bringing money from an organization that they think she managed in there. But if you're out at that time and got any kind of value, I mean, value, I'd be aware of, my surroundings are full and empty areas, and a source of security, like, if you have that. She went unharmed, but it, it was bad.
All right, any other new business? Eric Tan, motion adjourned? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mike. And?
The, the shell across from the hospital, I don't hear a point there.
Oh yeah, it's another one.